Reports and communications, we'll start it off tonight with Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Only one commission to report on for the last two weeks, mosquito abatement. Usually when we talk about mosquitoes, we're talking about West Nile, and it looks like it's going on, it's on the rise, but not with, thankfully, no human cases. For some reason, Butte County is just off the chart right now as far as the numbers, including human contact, they lead the state, but for some reason, thankfully, we're on the other end of that. There were some, there was some activity out towards the Shanghai Bend area and north Gray Avenue. There was some discussion about property that mosquito abatement owns, and as a point of reference, it's the property over by Dowers. The, they, we, we moved to set aside 2.2 million. Financial responsibility should require EPA cleanup. And that is, there was some cases of COVID that they were struggling with, and they're just mitigating that like everybody else is, doing their best. Other than that, I participated the day before 9/11, a remembrance ceremony at River Bend. Councilmember Harris and I joined the faculty and the students in remembering 20 years of 9/11, from 9/11. Jiven Baines, Principal Jiven Baines was nice enough to include us in that. The next day, I participated in the Station 1 9/11 ceremony. Thank you, Chief, for putting that on, doing such a great job with that. I think most of us attended Chief Landon's retirement luncheon over at the church, Nazarene Church on George Washington. And once again, City Manager, thank you very much, and you and your staff for putting on the citywide cleanup. I think you guys and gals hit that out of the park. I was amazed by watching the organization and the amount of trash and shopping carts that was picked up. I was absolutely blown away, and hopefully, we can do more of that so we can show other communities what a real city looks like and increase our quality of life. Lastly, once again, City Manager and I participated in the United Way Golden Wine Festival. It was a fundraiser out at Bishop's Pumpkin Patch. It was packed out, probably one of the nicest days of the year. Great turnout, people supported a great cause. And that's it.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Harris.
Oh, thank you. Had the opportunity to attend the Mayor's Brunch, which was hosted by Mr. Mayor Boom Garden and the city. It was very enjoyable, very pleasant time, also incorporated a quick tour of the Sutter Theater on Pluma Street and all the modifications they've been doing over there, and we're looking forward to some really good times and events in the future for the community over there, so thank you for that. On 9/11, I attended a moment of silence in my neighborhood fire station, Station 7, on Butte House Road, with gentlemen visitors from, a former fire chief out of Butte County came down, as well as one police officer. So we had a good respectful moment of silence for the tragedy and the victims of that tragedy, and then followed by maybe a couple cups of coffee and a lot of good conversation. So mission accomplished there. It was very, very nice. Let's see, also backed that up with the ceremony at River Bend School, as mentioned by Councilmember Kirchner, a very organized, very structured, very good and respectful event put on by the Principal Baines out there. Very impressive. Regional housing, let's see here, excuse me. Oh, we received, the main thing we did in the last meeting, we received an annual independent auditor's report, and passed with flying colors and then some, really, it was a very robust and detailed approach to finances. Mr. Marco Cruz, the Chief Financial Officer at RHA, and his staff have done an excellent job and no doubt will continue to do so. Really appreciate their efforts. SACOG, we had the, see, we had a workshop, about an hour long, on racial inequities in transportation, which is a very unique approach to transportation planning. We continue to have those discussions. It was an interesting presentation with some interesting perspectives and some assumptions, and however, remaining focusing on our purpose there, which should be a policy and direction and moving forward as far as a policy as we make decisions, we'll keep the conversation there, and it definitely is something that we do not want to even accidentally work into policies as we make decisions on where to put infrastructure. So I would recommend maybe perhaps folks watch that, it's recorded and online. SACOG's Youth Leadership Academy, they're accepting applications. I would humbly ask that maybe we consider offering the opportunity up to our members of our youth commission, the alternates, and perhaps even some of the folks who were not selected but yet deserve to have some type of opportunity. It would be really good. We had, they entered their last program recently, I had an opportunity to speak via Zoom meeting with the folks that are from Uba City on the SACOG's Youth Leadership Academy, and they're, I'll tell you what, very impressive, young people, not unlike the folks I'm sure you folks, you guys encountered during those interviews. So any opportunity to help our youth, especially the ones that quote "get it," I'm all for it. So maybe we can raise that opportunity up for them, that'd be awesome. Uba Soto Transit, we authorized an execution of a contract for upgraded, updated, and slightly modified security system at Uba Soto Transit facilities, not just the one out on Highway 7 in Marysville, but some parking rides and various other facilities throughout the region. And they will, we will also be having a public hearing in conjunction with SACOG regarding the unmet transit needs in Uba Soto area, get feedback from our community to see what they feel we are lacking as far as their transportation, transportation needs are concerned. That will be online at 1:00 PM on November 9th. And thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next is Councilmember Esposito.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris, that's really cool about the leadership. It sounds like a nice project to invite our commissioners and others. So I attended the Bye County Homeless JPA Government Affairs Committee, and Ben joined in on that meeting. It's usually a quarterly meeting, and mainly it was committees reporting on activities through the consortium and throughout the region. One of the things that, because there's been so many changes in leadership and government, we have a new CM, there's new CAOs, a lot of this work was done back in 2017, 2018, so I requested for the regional strategic plan to be shared out with all the elected folks and CMs and CAOs in order to help refresh the memory, because some of these decisions were made prior to even some of us being here on those, on the planning and the MOUs and the work that we all agreed to do together. Also, we had the mayor, along with the CM, we had a homeless meeting with the county, which ties everything to our homeless task force with the city, the work of the citywide cleanup was part of that task force, it came through that committee, and that idea flourished through the committee of people that work for the city. And so I was extremely impressed on how well organized it was, how quickly city employees volunteered to be part of it, and when we were, Officer Kowski and I were out talking to businesses, how receptive the businesses were. I was honestly expecting to get a lot of, you know, my ear chewed on the homeless issues, and pleasantly, it was really the opposite. It was, how can we help? We want to help. And so, thank you, Devon, and all of the committee members who helped pull all of this together, and Ben, your team, for putting that strategies flyer together, really helpful, useful, they really liked it, and they were posting it up in their offices, I saw that immediately, and so, good work on that. So thank you, everyone, for really stepping up, and our council, Vice Mayor and Mayor, everyone, doing, you know, I didn't do the cleanup, I went around and talked to the businesses, but it was fun hanging out with Officer Kowski, because he, if you ever have an opportunity to go on a ride-along, I really suggest to go out with him. He's an amazing gentleman. His connections with the business owners, knowing the homeless population, and knowing how to really engage and find ways to have discussions on a really difficult topic. And when he was interacting with homeless community members, he did this, Kaus, am I saying it incorrect? Oh, Kowski, Kowski, pardon me, okay. I was on my roll and you just, thank you, thank you. Am I over time or what? Anyhow, he does an amazing job, very proud of his work. Participated, also attended the Regional Water Agency. The big topic, drought conditions, very big concerns, and a lot of regional information was shared, and nomination for the Vice Chair for Aqua. I'm not going to get into the details of the politics of that, but it was a good meeting. Participated also in the Regional Water Advocacy Program, and we reviewed countless bills and discussed these bills, and no resolution at this point, because things are still going through, through the governor for approval or nonapproval of certain bills. Then, attended the Lega City Revenue Taxation Committee. That was a long, deep conversation about, because I think most of you are going to be attending the Lega City Conference this week. The annual conference, there's a resolution number one, so keep an eye for that, Mayor and Vice Mayor. The request, it was passed through the committee, meaning that in that resolution, there's a request for the legislator to work with Cal Cities to pass legislation that provides for a fair and equitable distribution of the Bradley-Burns 1% local tax from in-state online purchases. The opposition, it, there's few cities that were opposing, and we all received emails, I think, and our City Manager forwarded some of that, in particular for large companies. One of the large companies that was discussed is Amazon Corp. Company, because they're establishing these fulfillment centers, and they're designing the ways to be able to not be considered the online shopping, but locally, so taxes end up staying in the community where these fulfillment centers are, if this was to not pass. And so, at this point, we want to keep it where the purchase is done, and where, when I buy my items, when they come to me, the taxes come to Uba City, that 1% comes to Uba City. Otherwise, these, I think there's like 13 or 14 locations of these fulfillment centers in California. So quite a lengthy discussion on that. I also had the opportunity to participate in the 20th anniversary of 9/11. Thank you, Chief Alexander, for your team and everyone putting that together, much appreciated, and for the work of everyone in the service of that time. Also had the opportunity to speak in front of the American Association of University of Women last Saturday. It was their first time getting together in person since almost 2019, so it was a great opportunity to reconnect with many women in our community. And I attended Chief Landon's retirement, as many others, what a beautiful honor and celebration to him. And then this afternoon, our new Chief, Baker. I want to end with a memory of a family member that passed away a year ago, close to a year ago, on September 24th. My cousin, Sergio Espandola, died from COVID. I think I shared that story a year ago, and so the 24th of this month will be his one year anniversary. And, you know, there's, people have different opinions about vaccines or not vaccines, mask or no mask. At that time, the vaccine was not available, so I think Sergio would have taken the vaccine if he would have had access to it, but, you know, things were so different then, even a year ago. And all I can say is that I share with you my experience, and I share that folks should have the vaccine in order to be protected for themselves and for others. It frightens and scares me to see young children being put in situations where it could harm their life for a long, long time if they're not vaccinated or taken care of. I end with that, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last meeting, the GSEC, Greater Sacramento Economic Council, held its regularly scheduled meeting. Want to remind, as I reported out of the retreat, that the actual $100 million lending fund has been established for the low-income housing projects, for the infrastructure, so that is available. Ongoing discussions with GSEC, I've talked with the City Manager and the Mayor, want to get us together so that there's more comprehensive understanding of how we fit into GSEC as a city, as there's some great opportunities in that, so I look forward to that meeting coming up. Also, one other thing, and I'll go ahead and let you know this, you know, is we pay a membership fee every year to GSEC, and it's about $24,000, $26,000 a year to be a member of that. That is a drop in the bucket compared to what the major corporations from the private sector put in. They commit to a half million dollars, $100,000 a year over five years to be a part of that. And some of the discussions we talked about at the retreat is, it is the goal of GSEC in the future here to not require a monetary contribution from the municipalities, that's the goal they're heading for. So, you know, I strongly recommend we stay a part of this, there's great opportunities, and that is what their goal is, so I wanted my fellow council members to know that. Transit, thank you, Mr. Harris, for updating us on the security cameras and stuff, because as Keith put, our systems that were there were the old like, you know, 780P, really grainy, and we might be able to tell what happened if it was very slow motion, but we got new stuff coming to help everyone feel safe. The bigger topic that apparently I missed the meeting before, but it resurfaced, was the tree. And there's apparently a protected tree, but the new site out in Linda actually was supposed to start this week, clearing the grounds, but also protecting the endangered tree, and I forget what type it was. Elderberry, thank you. One elderberry tree that they're going to make sure stays safe during this process. The RWMA did not meet this past month, as we have no further business to go forward because the new JPA will be coming forward to all the municipalities. I encourage my fellow council members, talk to our City Manager, it has already been vetted by all municipalities, by our CM and our attorney. That will be coming before us early October, and they are hoping to have it accepted by all jurisdictions by mid-October, so that will move it forward on the timeline. So I encourage you, if you have any questions concerning that, please meet with the City Manager, get your questions answered ahead of time, as we'll be getting a presentation, I believe the first meeting in October is when it's slated to come forward. Things that I have attended, like many of you, you know, 9/11 was very sobering, and the 20-year anniversary is very sobering. And I want to, the whole week started with an event, the mayor and I was out at Calvary Christian Center, very moving there, all the way through, Chief, excellent job by Fire, the color guard, incredible, very honoring what you guys did that morning, and then to the ceremony later that day, all I remember is the acronyms, and it doesn't sound like what it means, but Fools Fraternal Order of Leatherheads? Something like that, anyway, whatever, it's, they did an excellent job, and a big shout out to Battalion Chief Hankins, because I know he's the president of that. It was quite moving to see everybody over at the museum, and top-notch, I really do appreciate that. Ms. Langley, your entire crew for the cleanup day that we did, it was great, we always, you know, we see Fire, we see PD and this and that, Public Works, man, they stepped up to the task, and they had the right equipment for the job. If they needed something, went back to the corp yard, got it, and we made a dent in the city, and I just, big shout out to you and your team, thank you so much, they did a heck of a good job, and can't say thank you enough, looking forward to the next one. So, Chief Landon, congratulations on your retirement, that actually is just a few days out, I know we've had the kind of the changing of the guard, but Chief is still with us, we have two Chiefs right now, and Chief Landon, wish you the best, thank you for your many years of service, and you are truly going to be missed at this city. And then the last thing I attended was, it was the Marysville Stampede this past week. Want to thank Public Works again, because they were right behind us on Wednesday cleaning up our mess, because we ran 40 head of cattle through town, through the medians, through some levees, but we got them across to where they needed to be, and I turned around and looked, and here comes our street sweeper right behind us, so there was no evidence left. But what's significant about that is when you look at the Stampede, that is our, that's our heritage in the West. The West was a Wild West, and rodeo is like one of the oldest sports around, and we had world champions here, thank you to Flying You and the Rosser family, we have a legend in Cotton Rosser and his family right here in our community. They give back, and just at the rodeo itself, they had our K-9 Association there doing fundraising. But not only that, we had the Give a Key Foundation, which is part of Uba City, raising money for breast cancer awareness. So it's a huge community event, I want to just give a huge shout out to our city for allowing it to go on and go through the city, thank you, Public Works, for cleaning up our mess, and then to the Rosser family, the Give a Key family, for the opportunities that they present, so thank you all, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, I got a few things. Mayor's Brunch, it was mentioned, this was the first time we were able to bring the mayors together since 2008, and really the impetus behind that was, these are the folks that paved the way for some of the stuff that we do, it was worthy to recognize them, interact with them, bring back a tradition, and so it was, it was a good afternoon, thank you to city staff for all the work you all did in helping to put that on, and I look forward to, hopefully, those, that kind of a tradition can continue in the future. LAFCO, let me speak about the LAFCO meeting, I'm ringing the bell. The Fire Chief and the City Manager participated in this meeting, there's a grand jury report out there about Sutter County Fire Department, and many people say, well, why do you, why do you care, Uba City, you know, you got your own municipal fire department, very professional, well-staffed. Well, the reason is, is because we're very regionalized here in our area, we all rely on each other, and if there's one fire department that's struggling, we're all potentially impacted by that. We share resources with Sutter County, we give them help, they give us help, some of it's call when needed, other times it's automatic, and so it's really something we need to pay attention to, because if, if they can't solve their problem of staffing and equipment, it has a direct impact, and it's this way. One is, we could spend a few more times out there taking care of their stuff, and I think Chief Alexander would absolutely agree here, is we're a busy department here in Uba City with 70,000 people, really busy, a fire department, and we don't always have the resources to share. So, and we rely on Marysville, and we rely on Live Oak, and we rely on Sutter, and we rely on Oswald Tudor, and we rely on all of our neighbors. So, anyway, I just, this grand jury thing, you know, I may not agree with everything that's in the report, but it is ringing the bell, and it does, it is, it does bear something. I have confidence in the leadership from our Sutter County supervisors, but it's an issue that really needs some attention. We're talking about emergency preparedness, and guess who sits with us in regional emergency operations centers, that would be Sutter County as well, so enough about that. COVID calls, listen to Dr. Lou every other week, and we get the briefings, we'll have one this Friday, it'll be interesting to see what the trends are here locally. Did Councilwoman Esposito talked about the homeless meeting, really a good meeting with county supervisors, the City Manager, the County Administrator, really trying to focus on a couple things that we can really do together, you know, we talk a lot about getting stuff done, but really, okay, what can we tackle, what can we really do? And there's some things coming on our horizon, we've all seen the Project Home Key, and the, you know, do we expand Better Way or what have you, but it was really about making sure that when we find folks who are struggling with homelessness, that there's a place for them to go, and when we find folks who are not necessarily the best citizens, is that we have an avenue to take care of that as well. And we have a fair amount of that going on, and we found that when we did the cleanup, okay? So, anyway, I was encouraged, and I appreciate the invitation, and I appreciate the participation from the City Manager. As for the cleanup, Vice Mayor stole my thunder, I got a chance to ride with Tim Bybee and hang out with some of that crew, and the Vice Mayor is entirely correct, I obviously have a connection to the fire department, so I, you know, I spend some time with those folks, and PD as well. This was probably the first time I got to ride in a sewer guy's pickup truck, and he invited me to go do it again, and I will, you know, it's good people, and everybody, top to bottom, you know, Samantha Benzel's picking up needles, and city staff, safely, yeah. I mean, it was, it was, it was a good day, and it was a really good feel-good event. 9/11 ceremony, obviously near and dear to my heart, 20 years ago, we got that thing started at the BD, you've carried the, carried it forward, really meaningful, I really appreciate that. I'm a member of the Trauma Intervention Program Board of Directors now, I would note that Lou Benninger is no longer affiliated with Trauma Intervention, Lisa Amaro-Helmert is now the CEO, we have a new board as well, looking to continue to carry on the very good work that TIP does in the community. Rob Landon, you know, was just such a consummate professional, had the opportunity to work alongside him, had the opportunity to witness the time that I was away and back in the city. I have the good fortune of bringing him on 93Q with me tomorrow, so if you're listening, it'd be a good little send-off for Rob. Brian Baker, I have a tremendous amount of confidence in Brian coming forward, Police Department, I mentioned it today at the ceremony, anybody who engages in that line of work in this day and age, I think, has my utmost respect, and anybody who's in leadership positions, that includes you, also has my utmost respect. It's just a profession, I think, that's, in some cases, really under scrutiny, and they take care of us, and that's, these are the men and women that, you know, allow us to go to sleep at night without having to worry too much anyway about anything happening. I want to take a quick mention of the Mayor's Leadership Institute, there was a piece on that, you know, I would hope, as people come into the council chambers, I've witnessed this over my professional career here, and now as a council person, they're just unaware, and it's not their fault, but they just don't know what's really going on, and this is an opportunity for those folks who want to learn more about how the city of Uba City operates, is to take, participate in these things, this is where you can get, okay, what are we doing with bike paths and electric stuff for charging and everything, because those activities are Because those activities are going on. We've got a fantastic staff that is, I think, you know, in the front row. And so, I encourage anyone who has questions about how the city operates to take advantage of the Mayor's Leadership Institute. Almost done here. The rodeo. I talked with, and Vice Mayor really hit it on the head. I mean, this is a gem, a local gem. 80, no, 87? 87 years this thing's been going on and people, oh, it's a Yuba County and it's a Marysville thing. No, it's not. It's a, it's a regional and it's a community thing. You know, if you look at the people who are participating, there's Yuba City participants in this. There are Yuba City people participating as sponsors. There's Yuba City businesses contributing. They had the Yubusutter Canine Association. So, I've asked the, the city manager if, if we could please consider recognizing both Cotton Rosser and Reno Rosser for their contributions to the community, especially Cotton, of course, who's a, who's a living legend, but Reno as well and Nicole for that matter. And they're, they're doing something in the community that not only is entertainment, but it's really charitable and giving back as well. So, in a coming, in the next few weeks, I hope to have Cotton in here and hope to have Reno in here and hope to have Nicole in here and, you know, we can recognize their contributions to the community. Tonight, I'd like to close in memory of Francis Silva. I think most of us certainly had come across Francis and so, he's Mr. Levy, to me anyway, Levy District 1. Francis passed away, he's 99 years old and I can still remember him even here recently attending meetings. I think he was in Subufka still, right? I mean, he was attending meetings in 99. And so, you know, if you, if you look at, at the levees and you look at the fact that, you know, our levees has improved over time, you can certainly hook Francis Silva into that, into that realm of those folks who took, took care of and dedicated a lot of energy and time and life to, to making us all safe. That being said, we'll close the September 21, 2021 City Council Meeting. There we go.